All right, all right, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome you to the April 8th, 2025 City of Dayton City Council meeting. A roll call, please. Ms. Klein.
Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Judd?
Here.
Member Lovins?
Here.
Member Horton?
Here.
Member Neary?
Here.
Member Neiman?
Here.
Administrator Fawcett?
Here.
City Attorney Edmondson?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here. Now I can say full house. I always appreciate that when everyone makes it. Now if you'd please rise for a moment of silence and a pledge to be legalese. Fantastic, and thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Next up on the agenda, we have the marriage report. We had a pretty busy month. We've had a pretty busy week. We've had lots of rising waters around the river cities here. Dayton is also no stranger to the rising waters. We really want to thank our Public Works Department for making sure everyone's safe. All the drains were cleaned. The impacts were as small as they could be. I know we've got some flooded families over on Route 8 on Mary Ingalls. And you know, my heart goes out to them and I wish them speedy fix on their buildings. But overall, I think we fared pretty well, considering this was a massive flood. But I appreciate everyone's efforts on that. And if there's anything that we can do to help the families impacted, please feel free to reach out. Second of all, I want to let everybody know that this weekend, we'll have the Easter Egg Hunt. That's always fun. We'll have that down here at Gillin Park. We're also going to be doing our strategy planning session here in this actual room. So the city council will be here. It is open to the public, so everyone's welcome to join. And we're going to talk about what our priorities are, our strategies to get to those priorities for the next year or so. And that is my report.
I have a question.
Yes.
This Saturday at what time? This Saturday at what time?
Starts at 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
And go to about 4:00.
9:00 to 4:00.
There will be a break for the egg hunt.
The Easter Egg Hunt.
But we'll be back.
Break for the Easter Egg Hunt, and everyone is invited.
Both things.
Okay.
All things.
Correct.
And the Easter Egg Hunt's at 1:00.
I think it's at 2:00. Is it 2:00? I believe it's at 2:00. But it's on our calendar. Jared, you know, it's Easter Egg Hunt at 2:00 o'clock.
What time is the Easter Egg Hunt?
1:00.
1:00.
It was 2:00.
So we'll break from the strategic planning session to go help the kids find some eggs, and then we'll come right back to the people's work. And that is my marriage report. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March of 2025?
So moved.
Member Neary's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Lovins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Next up on the agenda, we'd like to open up the podium here for public comments regarding any of the legislative agenda items for this evening. So again, this is for just the agenda items for this evening. If you have something that you'd like to speak about that's not on this, we'll have space for that later on in the evening. The podium is open for anyone.
Mr. Mayor, since the only thing on the agenda tonight is the resolution about the expenditures in the Parks Department, I think I would like to hear from a citizen of ours that has devoted so much of his time to improving our parks and serves on the park board to get his input on it. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Barry Baker. No relation.
Brother, but no. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I've been on the park board probably six years now, and two years ago, our committee got together to do an audit on all of our parks. So each month, we sat at each park and kind of came up with a plan, long-term plan, and what would, what needed to be done now. So what you're voting on tonight is what we had came up with, along with Jared. The much-needed repairs at Gillin Park since Dayton, the high school has opened up the new, what do they call it? One campus. So we started focusing on that as a major priority to come together with the school system with some new swing set and a much-needed repair at the pavilion. And the next part was going to be up at Sergeant Park, which is, there's a lot of much-needed repair done up there. It's been neglected over probably 20 or 25 years. So we had opened it up, we had come up with Mayor Baker 25 years ago, Joe?
Yeah.
And asked him if we could open up the park. And if you haven't been up there in a while, you should see the big improvement, along with Cora, Green Umbrella, let's see, Groundwork, Ohio River Valley, Target. We even have volunteers on Target. The community has come in and how much trash that we've taken out of there and where it is today compared to where it was five years ago. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you for your leadership.
Well, I just want to ask you to make, well, to make sure you vote on this, that the money, the much-needed budget money to be implemented on our new park. There's what, over $100,000 that's going towards these parks. And it is, I don't know, I get kind of emotional over this.
Don't cry. It's okay.
Growing up in Dayton and seeing how this was, you know, 50 years ago and where it is now, it does get emotional. But I want to thank you guys for it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anybody have any questions on what's going on up there? Or no?
I was interested in what you were talking about with the steps.
Oh, yeah.
For anyone who doesn't know, there are steps that come through town. They go from the bottom of town to top. It's like a cut through.
Well, we've come up with some, would like to implement maybe, I know it's going to take a while to get a lot of this work done, but it's called Connect Dayton. That's what the point I was pointing to Connect Dayton was a lot of small paths and connecting trails that will help the people of Dayton and our visitors get around through the city and be able to get up to Sergeant Park without having to drive all the way to Covert Run. You know, I find that kind of ridiculous to have to get to our parks where you have to drive. I'm an avid hiker, city walker, whatever you want to call us, but we have a lot of young people coming into our city that like to be out there among nature. And I think it's, we need this for our community, not only for our community, but for our young kids to have, get out of their house and get off of their gadgets. That's what my daughter said, get off their gadgets and get outside into nature where they can get some sunlight and vitamin D. We're all about this health, and I just want to thank you guys for coming on board with what we've come up with. Anybody have any questions or?
No, I just think in the future, we could be aware that those railings are broken on the steps and they're kind of scary if anybody fell on them and impaled themselves.
Yeah, the Dayton step, it goes from upper, lower Dayton to upper Dayton. And I don't know if that could come underneath the park board as a trail or whether it would be the city part of the street.
It's probably more, it's not considered a park, so the park funds wouldn't be used there, but regular city funds could be used there.
Yeah, could we put that underneath our umbrella as part of a trail system through Dayton where we could possibly use some of the funds? But it definitely needs repaired. Somebody's going to end up getting hurt on those steps. And it's, it's a good trail to lead up through Dayton and maybe towards, you know, we're going through Upper Belmont and down to St. James Town Pike Park. So, you know, we've got this, a great trail system in the making. It's just implementing and having the money to do this. I appreciate any help we can get on this. Thank you.
Thank you again, Barry, for your dedication to our parks. I see you out walking, I'm driving by, I feel guilty, but I still honk and wave. All right, wave back. The podium's still open for anybody who'd like to address council or administration for agenda items for this evening. Go ahead and close that. Next on the docket, we do not have any ordinances, correct, Ms. Klein?
Correct.
To go over this evening. The only thing we do have is, as Mr. Baker was just speaking about, one order resolution, and that is Order Resolution 2025-7 Romeo. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with total home care in the amount of $111,000, $111,300 for improvements to various structures located in parks in the city of Dayton payable from Dayton Park Funds.
So this is pretty self-explanatory. Barry did a good job of explaining this, but just to give you some details, this is mainly for improving structures in Sergeant Park and Gillin Park. And Gillin Park will be the garage, the pavilion, the concession stand and bathrooms, which will be completely new roofs and new siding. Really will spruce that up. And then Sergeant Park will be the pavilion there. That will be, same thing done too. So this is in this year's budget. So this year's budget ends, of course, in June 30th. We end, on this Saturday, we'll be working on plans for next year's budget. So we've got a lot more plans for this park here next door in the next budget. So it's pretty exciting, and we'll talk more about that on Saturday. But yeah, this is just the beginning of what I think will be a really nice transformation of that park.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. We have Order Resolution 2025-7 Romeo. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Member Neiman's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Kelly, Member Kelly, which opens up the resolution for conversation. So what kind of questions, concerns do we have? Mr. Judd?
Just as a new guy here, do we have to approve all expenditures through the park fund?
No, you don't. Actually, this probably didn't even need to come before you because it's already been budgeted in the, in last year's budget, but we just felt it was good to have it before you and have a discussion about it.
Okay, thank you.
We did have three bids, by the way, I forgot to mention, and this was the lowest, the most responsive, and unfortunately, it was also a city of Dayton business.
Yeah, major bonus.
That's, that's good, too.
What's the timeframe this will be done?
I don't know. Jared's been talking with the vendors. Do you know when they talked about starting on this? It was start in two months? And it was start immediately after this is approved and start and finished in two months?
So the school is supposed to open up the football stadium in August. So this will coincide nicely before that. So when people come over here to check out our sweet new digs, there's going to be some sweet new digs.
Mayor, you might want to mention, I don't think we want to say what it is because I don't want to blow surprise, but we have a surprise for some of the students at Lincoln.
Do you think the kids are watching this?
Yeah, they might be. Their parents are, but don't say what it is. But we were student council, sixth grade student council at Lincoln, met with the mayor and I, what, it was probably three or four weeks ago.
That's great.
And they had a lot of ideas about the park, what they wanted to see there. And their number one priority, I can't talk about, they have several priorities. So when they come back from spring break, we're hoping, it's not too busy with flood cleanup, we'll have his crew ready with one of the things they wanted, so.
Yeah, it was really cool. The school's been extremely proactive with meeting with the city. And we're getting off topic here, we got to get back to this, but it's really fun to be able to meet with the kids. And I'm talking like sixth grade and under, and listen to them and hear their world, and make them feel like they're a part of the city and be able to act on that. But we'll get to that later. This is not part of that.
Include the what?
Playground equipment.
That's, that's, that's still discussions that will be in next year's budget.
This is for all the infrastructure, which does not include playground equipment.
And especially for the new members and the audience, just, this is coming out of the park board fund, which is completely separate from the general fund. That's a 0.5 on the taxes, and it is not subject to TIF. All the properties down in the TIF district, you know, you have that 80/20 rule where we only retain 20% of the property tax, but we do maintain, we do retain all of their park board tax.
That's correct.
On all of the properties. We've not spent a lot of, hardly any money on the parks over the past couple of years. I applaud the park board with coming up with a list of priorities on how it could be best spent. But also, we bring in, I believe it's about $100,000 a year in the park tax. So this is a little bit more than one year of revenue from the parks. If we could spend $100,000 on our parks every year with the guidance of the park board and administration, we're going to be in great shape. We do have parks all around town. I think at one time, we said, because the levy and the Riverfront Trail is now also included.
That's correct.
In the parks jurisdiction, roughly 10% of our acreage in the city of Dayton is a public park, which I think is larger than any other community around here. A lot of work to do, but this is a great start to it, and I hope everyone approves this. And I'm really anxious to see, especially at Gillin, as Barry said and the mayor said, with the improvements down here and the new one campus, it's really going to be a shiny example of what we can do in the city.
It's going to be visible.
Pardon me?
It's going to be visible.
Yes.
It's always fun to do projects, but the visible projects are very fun.
Right. Well, I'm a big believer in take care of what you have already, and Gillin's a great asset. We've, you know, the maintenance on it, we've just been maintaining it, not improving it. Sergeant Park with opening it up five years ago and the volunteerism and the grant from, for the trails. If you haven't been up there, I mean, I know it's terribly muddy right now with the new clay paths. I was down there the other day, and I think I ended up with like 10 pounds of clay on each shoe. The signage is up, the trails are done, the bridges are in. It's really what we've been dreaming about since we started the project. And I believe, Mr. Jared, I believe the Cora is done with their portion of the project
When are you projecting them to start at Gillin? Only reason why, because May is a very important month in the school system. Elementary has their end-of-the-year picnic. We use, not me, but then uses the park, same with baseball. I just know May. I just know May is your field day. It's everything that you've been school with, so.
Any more discussion, questions, comments?
One more thing, sir. The option was on the proposals for the standing seam metal roofing.
Yes.
At an additional cost. Is that included in what we're approving tonight?
It is.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please, Ms. Klein.
Member Judd?
Yes.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Horton?
Yes.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
You convinced them.
All right, I want to thank Mr. Baker for his years of work on that. You know, when he first approached me, it was COVID. I mean, we was like, it was COVID. It was, we were staying in our houses, and he said, we need to go up to Sergeant Park. And I wasn't so familiar with it at the time, and there was barbed wire wrapped around it. And it was a matter of time where we were all looking to get outside and, you know, get away from the house. So it's come a long way, man, and you are a big part of that. Member Neary's a big part of that. A lot of these members on council are part of that. Appreciate your work on it, sir. All right, next up, we have Department Director's Monthly Report, and we are going to go with fire first this evening because it's been a busy week, my friend.
Everybody has my report. It's on top of that, we have had two fires. Really, guys did a great job. Nothing burnt past what was burning when we got there. But, you know, both of the fires we had had a lot of structures on both sides. Nobody got hurt, so it's good, as good as it can be.
I couldn't believe, I went up the one on 10th Avenue, and that house must be six feet from the other house, and I can't believe you kept the flames from touching that. It was.
Yeah, I mean, they really did a good job when, for sure, when there was fire that was coming out of that. They're both still under investigation. We put them out, we called Campbell County Fit Team, Fire Investigation Team on both of those. So they're working on those. Aside from that, we passed our annual squad inspection this month, and we had two of our members complete the training they need for the state to get their 300 hours. So been busy. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
We have a fire board meeting next Wednesday, correct?
Yeah, or next Thursday.
Next Thursday, I'm sorry.
And so we have, we had, the last one, we weren't able to have, so this one, we are going to swear in some of the new guys. We've got some promotional pennies, so that'll be beginning if anybody wants to show up for that and support them would be nice. We have Callahan at 6:00.
Fantastic, it's next Thursday at 6:00.
All right.
You're free, come on out, support. It's that time of year when spring is sprung, and here in Dayton, that's certainly happening, which means the grass is getting taller, and that means code enforcement is out. I know someone's got tall grass.
I cut mine.
So did you cut it?
Yeah.
All right, I've been joking with them about it. It was so wet the last week, nobody could get out and cut it, but good on you, man.
He was out of town.
I did. Did it yesterday, sir.
Ms. Patterson, you can take him off the bad list, but can you give your report, please?
You have a copy of my report. I want to say Bill is starting back the inspections. The rental inspection is due by April 15th. We will start this, probably he'll get those scheduled by May and June. That'll get the ball rolling for the second, second year, well, second year, second year.
Second by annual.
Right. And let's see, what else do I have going on here? I also sent out an email asking for volunteers. I'm on the committee at school. They're having a speaker on Tuesday, April 22nd. We're looking for a few more if anybody's interested. I send emails out to everybody, and.
Cassie, you want to talk a little bit about Manhattan Harbor, our Manhattan Boulevard? We gave notice to the developer that you need to clean up that, and I think they took a whole 20-yard.
Took a 20-yard dumpster out today.
Out today.
They'll be back tomorrow. I'm going to go meet with them tomorrow and go over once again what needs to be done. Mr. Huntley said that they've, he noticed an improvement already today, so that's good. They've kind of left things lying around for way too long. Yes, so we're, that's in the works. Once again, it's a huge project, so just bear with us. We're working on it. Yeah, but other than that, that's about it. If you need it.
On the email that you sent out, is it the 21st or the 22nd?
It's the 22nd, Tuesday, the 22nd.
Is that the scared straight one, the guy who?
Steered straight.
Steered straight.
Yep. And the volunteers they're looking for, this is an all-day event, so they're going to do each school. They're going to do like the high school, the middle school, the professional development. They're doing the teachers, all that kind of thing. But what we're looking for volunteers, probably 4:00 to 4:30. If you want to go to the event, that's great. It's over approximately 7:30, but they're serving hot dogs, chips and water. They're going to have about 20 vendors there from around Campbell County. I know like the Campbell County, our police and fire are going to be there. I think the city's going to set up a little table. So just different police agencies. It's a River Cities event, I think. They've invited other schools from around this area. So it's, I don't know much about the guy, but they, they just rave about him, so. And it's all basically about how people are targeting youth for like vaping and, you know, they have those gummies now that look like gummies, they really look like candy, and they're really, you know, they have THC or whatever in them. So I think it'll be a good program. I think parents will get a lot out of it. I probably would get a lot out of it because I'm totally oblivious to some of these things that they were showing. So yeah, I think it'll be a good event. If you're interested in volunteering, even anybody in the audience, if you're interested in volunteering, just shoot me an email. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for organizing that, Cassie.
Thank you.
Any questions to anybody else? Nah, we're good, we're good. Thanks, Cassie, for your involvement, not just in keeping all of our grass nice and trim, but also throughout the community. You're so good at that. Keeping with being busy, Public Works, Mr. Lucas, we've had lots of water, we've had lots of growth.
A lot of pictures, which that's what the Corps is going to want from us. And also today, we got, well, we got Gillin Park cut last week, and we got Vine Street Park cut today, Park Street Park cut today, and all the lots on 4th Street. And we fixed up Community Garden. We got everything weeded inside.
Good.
All the garbage taken out, the fences are straight now, all but one, one piece of a gate.
All that rain, just expect to cut it again next week.
Is that 3rd Avenue or 4th Avenue?
Most week, too.
Rick, was that 3rd Avenue or 4th Avenue garden?
The 4th Street.
The 4th Street garden.
Yeah, yeah, we cleaned it all up, mowed it, weeded it and everything. Also on the River Trail, we won't be able to do anything with that until the water goes.
Right.
When it's almost off, we'll get on it when it's actually a little bit of water on it. And I mean, yeah, we've been swamped early. One guy's on vacation all weekend, dating, he said, oh, let's hold up on the gate. I was a nervous wreck.
Glad that you were.
Because I know 62 puts it right there.
Yeah, but what we learned is that the new road.
It's going to take a lot more.
That they built, the last section of Manhattan Boulevard is actually another levy system. In the old days, Old Dot Road, we would get that water coming up that road, but that new road is higher and it's holding that water back. So the only place we're going to get water from now is down by Doyle's.
That's it.
And so I think it's added probably another five or six feet, so we won't know for sure that we have.
But it's still got to come up over the rays on the road.
I know. But I think in the past, we probably would have put it up now. We were ready. We had a truckload of sand.
Right, we had everything ready.
Truckload of sand.
I even rented a piece of equipment and had it in our parking lot ready to go.
And we had, and that's another example, Rick, he's been around here so long, he's always relationships. So Art's Rental brought that truck on a weekend when they're not, off of business, out of business, not open for business.
Right.
And brought that to our facility and parked it there and said, it's here when you need it. So luckily, we didn't need it, but we were ready to go. But yeah, I think we're. And brought that to our facility and parked it there and said, it's here when you need it. So we'd luckily, we didn't need it, but we are ready to go. But yeah, I think we're probably, we won't know for sure until we have a bigger flood, but I think we've probably got another four feet that we can
It's close, yeah. It could even be more than that.
Yeah, but we won't know. We won't make, you know, we'll
I won't be as nervous when it gets 60 degrees.
But you didn't really get that close.
Because it takes, I mean, it takes almost two days to put that floodgate up.
And I was going to talk about this, but I'll just finish, finish. I was down, went down to Mary Ingles before I came here tonight, and it's still covering the road.
Oh, yeah.
It's slowly receding, but not much. I said
It's going to take over a week.
Two or two more days, two or three more days for sure before it's off the road. So
Go down there past Riverside? I haven't been down there today.
Right, just past Riverside, right where our water ends and Fort Thomas begins. That area is still, I mean, it's pretty deep, too. You would really
Right, it's pretty deep down there.
Car would be inundated if it went in there.
We closed it. The Police Department and Public Works, it was like two feet deep. Then went back a couple hours later, it was like four feet deep, you know, so just a blink of an eye.
And technically, that's a state highway, but the mayor said, you know, do I shut this out? I said, for sure, yes.
Let them come and talk about it.
They would be happy. They were so busy doing all the other, so yeah, let's do it.
I mean, it's not that big of a deal for us to go out and do something like that. I mean
Right.
Yeah, it didn't take that long. We got the barricades and stuff.
Yeah, I'm glad you did it.
Well, you definitely saved some people
Saved life.
Saved some people from flooding their cars and saved some police and fire from them to come rescue them.
They might get hurt, too. I mean, especially in the middle of the night. And I ordered more signs about high water flooding and all that. I mean, as far as I know, FEMA pay for all that.
Right.
When we go to do all that work.
Good work.
Other than that, though, I have
Now, now you get to clean it all up.
Yeah.
Or not. And then what you said about Doyle's, though, man, that's, that's just so devastating to see how my heart goes out to them.
I know Joan, the girl worked in her office, it was touching her foundation.
Yeah. But they're in a little rise.
Right. Yeah, she had a foundation, so that's why it didn't get in. Other than that, I may get any questions?
Okay, thanks. Last and certainly not least, Chief Haffill with the Police Department.
My report for March. Any questions reference that? Okay. We will be doing the steered straight with Cassie. I won't be here. I'll be at my yearly training. But the Police Department will have the, the new pop-up tent and flags and all that stuff. And we'll be passing out gun locks and some other thing at the park. We'll be helping out with that. We came out with Summer Bash. The date is going to be July 19 from 12 p to 4 p. So hopefully, we get a good turnout again this year. Hopefully, we get the same groups of people that came. And we had the petting zoo, which was, you know, pretty nice. The kids liked that. And we're looking forward to that. We're looking right now for donations for the silent auction that we come together with the year to help out with the civic club. And the only other thing on the agenda, I was able to speak, I think the mayor has done it before. I was the March Inspired Speaker at Dayton High School on Monday, March 24. So I got to finally do that. I had to wait till my kids graduated high school, so they didn't get teased with their dad coming to school and talking. So it was finally my turn to come in and talk. And we had a really good conversation about the do's and the don'ts and making good decisions and do something that inspires you. And treat people that you want to be treated like you want to be treated. Like that's how we, our motto in the Police Department, do unto others as you have done unto you. And that's kind of how we do it. So connect that with bullying. If you don't want to be bullied, don't be bullied, you know, bully somebody else. So it was, it was nice to come down, talk to the school. Good time.
Any crazy questions?
Yeah, the usual. If I've ever shot anybody before, draw my gun and shot anybody. That's, that's the usual question. But yeah, but some of them were interested in what it took to be, to become a police officer, what you have to do. And, you know, it's just the basic questions, not, not out of the ordinary.
Typically, I don't have a problem speaking in front of people, but it's when you're standing in front of a bunch of teenagers, it's different.
Yeah.
They asked me if I preferred Jordans or Dunks. I'm like, I don't really have a stance, which was like mind blowing to them that I did not have a stance.
Yeah.
I think I want team Dunks.
Yeah, good questions, but they were the usual, not out of the ordinary.
Thanks for doing that. That's, that's important stuff.
Yeah, I like doing that.
Chief, a couple meetings ago, we approved the, I guess, an interlocal agreement for a social worker.
Yeah.
Is that, is that position currently filled?
Busy. Yeah, the, I think the first day, I mean, they worked. It's been about three weeks now. They've been really busy between the city of Dayton and Bellevue. One of our people that have mental illness that, the scene around town, we brought them to meet him. And he was already put in transitions. He was, he wanted help. He needed some help. And they gave him the resources that he need. He needed, yeah. And they actually got him an Uber and he was in transitions that day. So it was just like
It was amazing.
First day, yeah, first day, they got one of our guys some help that he needed and, which is great. We haven't, we haven't seen him since. So I'm assuming he's still getting the help that he needs. But they have really helped out with some of the mental illness and some family issues, I guess. So That's great. I believe, Jay, they just sent us, I think, an email on, I guess, what cases they're working and what they've done, kind of where things are. They've been really busy.
Yeah, they have.
Good.
Can't thank them enough. It's, yeah, it's really helped.
It's a great asset to have.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's something, is there a heightened urgency on police stops lately? I mean, I like it. I love it. I like seeing it. But I've seen a lot of just stops, especially on the Manhattan Boulevard side. And I've seen like, there's two people in the car. I don't know if there was like a ride along situation going on where they were doing some stopping.
No, that is actually Caleb Crawford. He's our new police officer.
Awesome.
He was supposed to be, he was an alternate with the academy, was supposed to start March 30. Not enough people dropped out or failed out through testing where he was able to get in. So now he's going to be field training till May 5. I think it's the next, he's got to wait another month before he goes in. So he's going to be riding along. He's been riding with Officer Wiley for day shift. And then the next two weeks, he'll be on kind of like a swing shift. And then towards the end of the month, we'll get him back on days, get him acclimated with day shift, because that's what he's going to be doing for the next till, I believe, September 11. This was graduation date. So he's going to be far off. But as far as the question goes, an answer for you is just, we have a lot of complaints speeding on Manhattan Harbor or Boulevard and some of the stop signs at Sixth and Berry. People doing the Dayton Bellevue roll. But some people were actually not stopping at all. Like I said, I think you've caught me on video on one of your things, you know, that's, that's what I had. But given his, I believe they had a delivery truck blocking the stop sign. So he didn't, he was new to the area and didn't see the stop sign. So that was something we had, we worked out with Wayfair about where the trucks park and blocking the stop signs. But enforcement is, is, yeah, it's gone up a little bit just due to the complaint.
It's, it's good to see.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief Haffill? Thank you for your service, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Fawcett, it's your turn for the City Administrator's Report.
Well, I've hit a lot of things talking with Rick and some of the others, but I did want to mention the Community Garden that came up recently. We had a Community Garden on 3rd Avenue for many years, relatively small garden. Now we have an opportunity to have a much bigger garden where Urban Farms used to be. That was Susan Bearfirst Ford's garden. And she decided this year not to continue doing her gardening program. She made a wonderful, Bloody Mary mix, by the way, and we all had to see it go. But she did donate all of her beds and everything that she had in there to the city. So we've got this wonderful garden now that's available to the committee, the community. And I know that Tristan and Jared had been, started the first meeting. What's the, when's the next meeting and where are we at? And that, Tristan?
Turned it off. We don't have a follow-up scheduled yet.
Okay.
I was kind of waiting until it got a little drier in there. And we had some of the weeds cleaned up to get some measurements and start the sign up. And then once we get the sign up out, we'll schedule a follow-up meeting. Yeah.
So what we're going to do is a lot, those various beds, of course, we've got plenty. So anybody in the community wants to come down and start a garden, we're encouraging you to do that. So we'll have more information. We'll have it on Facebook and send it out on our newsletter. And we're in the process of working with Rick to get a water line in there. There's not a water line there now, but we, we have a meter right outside, which we're going to do. So we'll be able to get water in there as well. So I think it'll be a really great opportunity to have your own fresh vegetables here in the urban area. So we'll keep you informed when we have more news about that. That's all I got.
I have a question. What happens to the old Community Garden?
Well, so we're actually talking to a business that's thinking about maybe locating there and putting their small shop there. They're, they do tile work. And a lot of their employees are nine employees, a lot of them live in Dayton. So it's still early, so I don't want to say too much about it at this point. I haven't, we've had a conversation about a week ago or so. I haven't heard anything back since. But we're looking at maybe using that to generate some payroll tax for the city.
And what's the address for the Community Garden?
1117 Fourth. It's on the north side, next to an industrial area. Then there's two, two houses, 1117, 1119, middle, middle of the block, 1100 block.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns for
I think Barry had a question.
Administrator Fawcett? Oh, yeah.
So Reverend comments, everything is in the, in the state's hands. They got the final checklist. I've talked to Dane Blackburn, who's the engineer dealing with it. He says it's top priority. He told me that a couple of weeks ago. I email him every week saying, hey, is there anything else you need? What can we do to help? And so we're waiting. And Mike Egger says he's talked with them, too. It should be any day, but I hate saying that because I said that last time we met, I think. But that's where it's at. So everything's done. And last I heard, he was looking over our bid documents. He had made a few changes to it. But once that's finished, we're ready to go. So, but we got, we can't do it until KYT gives us the go. So that's what we're waiting on. What was the other one? The other question?
Sidewalk.
No, the one that, oh, the, the second phase.
Right.
So that, and that, Mike Egger's going to come talk about that on Saturday, but the meeting, but that is in, it's been, design's been completed. And the utilities, most of the utilities have been moved. And they're, the only thing they're looking at is whether you have to acquire any property. But again, that's, that's where, it's in the state's hands. So they have the design plans. We're hoping to get that done this year. And so once we get that done, that's my next one I'm going to start hard on. So I'd love to get it done this year along with that one. But we'll see. I know. Oh, I know. Yeah, it's a little tricky. There's a couple of streams here that come really close to the road. We have to do, we have to build some, some support for that. But we're also, another thing we're doing, we didn't do on the other one, was we're building in stormwater issues to take care of the stormwater that comes down that hill, which is really bad when it rains. So that's going to make it safer, too. And there'll be a curb, which will make it safer for pedestrians as well. So, yeah, so I think this design will be a little bit better than the one we had before. So they are, they're, they're moving forward. And they're, they're talking with the Corps of Engineers, you know, how slow the Corps is. But they are saying, things look good. They're keeping me in the loop. So we're hoping that the Corps, they said it will be a two-year process. So just started that, what, six months ago or so? So I guess this is just that whole process where you get to go through the, all the Corps' requirements and all that stuff. And then they sign off on it. But I mean, they say they're going to spend over a million dollars on that restoration project. So that'll be amazing. And that will go hand in hand with what you guys have done with the trails there, too. Yeah, it's going to be great. And they'll take a lot of that invasive species, too, as part of that process. So that'll be great. You know, Sunnysuckle and other products that are invasive will be taken out as well. So that'll be good.
Is the creek flooded up now on cover?
Falling in. Yeah, for sure. And they'll probably take, they're going to take down a few more trees that are near, near the creeks as well to keep that from happening in the future.
Any other questions for Mr. Fawcett? Thank you, sir. Now, the podium is open for anybody from the audience who would like to address City Council on anything that's on your mind. So it doesn't have to be tonight's agenda, just anything that's on your mind. All right, quiet crowd tonight, so we're going to go ahead and close that out. We have next and last on the docket for new business, anybody from council would like to address City Council Administration, Public, the world, about their questions and comments. Anybody?
What was that magazine from the state that was in my mailbox? Is it KLC's magazine?
Kentucky City?
Yeah, Kentucky League of Cities.
That's it, that's it. They had an article in there by one of the mayors. They do different mayors for different cities every month or every edition. And I know Mayor Baker and Administrator Fawcett had that sit down with Lincoln Schools, which I think was pretty productive. One of the articles in there, one of the mayors said, he sits down quarterly, I think it's quarterly, with the high school students. And he asks them, what will it take, what do you want this city to be? What would, what would keep you here after graduation? Or have you come back after you graduate from college? I think it's a great idea. So I just recommend maybe expanding those sit-down sessions with the student council from high school, because we're not going to be doing this forever. We need that next generation to start getting involved. And, you know, Mr. Wolf was here a couple of months ago, and that was, how do we get the kids more involved with the city?
Right.
I think, you know, the success you have with that first program with Lincoln's Student Council, expand that to high school, too. Before they, especially now, right before they graduate, where are you going from here? What would bring you back?
I think it's a good idea. We meet every two weeks with Mr. Rick. And that will be a topic we'll raise next time we meet. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Because, you know, teenagers know everything. You know, they're the smartest people in
I had three, I know.
So I'm all about keeping these meetings as efficient, as quick as possible. So I'm just going to do a quick plug here for an opportunity for people to have more dialogue. So this past Thursday, I had a pizza and policy event that we had a few residents show up to. And I thought it was very successful for the first time out, a happy hour type event at Wayfair. So this Thursday coming up, two days from now, I'm going to do the same thing, but at the Rose Room. So this one's going to be a 21-plus event. But another opportunity for you guys to, and the community, to have your voices heard before we have our strategic planning session this Saturday.
Anybody else want to address council, administration, ideas, thoughts? It's not listed on here, but isn't there supposed to be a document or a bullet point for old business?
Not usually, but you can raise old business if you, if you want to talk about something.
We've not had that on the agenda for a long time, sir.
All right. Well, that, thanks for pointing that out, Jeff. But Cassie, make sure his lawn's nice and tidy.
I remember it.
All right, well, that's not on the agenda then. Next up is the on the adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Member Neary's made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Neiman's made, Neiman's made the second. I'll get it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any ahs? Any objections? Hope to see everybody out this weekend for the Easter egg crawl.